The views, information, and opinions expressed during the following program are solely those of the individuals involved and do not necessarily represent the views of Access Communications, its representatives, or its employees.
Well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to our regular meeting of the Weyburn City Council held here in council chambers at 6:00 PM Tuesday, May 23rd. I was away there last week, I mean, last council meeting, and tonight, Mr. Richards is away. We've got a full slate of council. We have also Grayson Niffel is our youth mayor. She is sitting in here tonight. We welcome her, and always a pleasure. We, tonight, we have a somewhat robust council package, but first off, we want the approval of the minutes of the regular council meeting and strategic planning and priorities meeting held May 8th, 2023. Do I have a motion, please?
Your worship, I'll make that motion.
I'll second it, your worship.
Call the question, all in favor? Carry unanimously. Additions to the agenda, Mr. Warren?
Yeah, thanks, your worship. No additions tonight from administration.
Additions, council? Seeing none, we'll move forward. Public hearings and notices, there are none. Tonight, we have a couple delegations and proclamations that we're having. The first one is the Public Works Week. Whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to the sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health, high quality of life and well-being of people of Weyburn. These infrastructure facilities and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals, who are engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government and private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding and improving and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. And it is in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children in Weyburn to gain knowledge of and to maintain an ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in their respective communities. And the year 2023 marks the 63rd Annual National Public Works Week, paying tribute to our public works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees, and to recognize the substantial contributions they make to protecting our national health, safety, and quality of life. So therefore, I, Marcel Roy, Mayor, City of Weyburn, Saskatchewan, do hereby proclaim the week of May 21st through 27th, 2023, to be Public Works Week in the city of Weyburn. And accepting this proclamation, we're gonna have a picture here, is our, part of our Public Works, Andy Williams. The theme of Pride Week, June 4th to 10th, 2023, in Weyburn is beyond the rainbow, education, celebration, and inclusion. Threats, violence, and harassment against LGBTQIA2+ people happen every day around the world. In many countries, crimes perpetrated because of someone's real or perceived or sexual orientation or gender identity are not prosecuted as hate crimes, and sometimes are not investigated at all. Homophobic and transphobic hate crimes have a devastating impact on the LGBTQIA2+ communities. Even in the Weyburn, the fear of being targeted pushes people to hide their identity. And pride events are about human rights, empowerment, LGBTQI2S+, individuals to celebrate their existence and perseverance. In the public spaces, they are often excluded. Visibility is crucial, and especially when LGBTQIA2+ people often feel they are in the margins of society. And Canada is home to over a million people who identify as gay, lesbian, bisexual, transgender, queer, questioning, intersex, asexual, or two-spirit people. So therefore, I, Marcel Roy, Mayor, City of Weyburn, do hereby proclaim June 4th to 10th, 2023, Pride Week in the city of Weyburn. And we have for Graydon, or whoever, is it that we're all for a picture? Yep. building department for April, casualty report, I should say, is for March, and fire department report, March, April. So with that, can we have one motion, please, for receiving?
Your worship, I move that the items on the consent agenda be accepted as presented.
I'll second that motion, your worship.
Call the question, all in favor? Good. Um, just momentarily, can you close the door, just momentarily? Just as they're doing the interview and all that stuff? Thank you, appreciate it. Motions, Director Wilkinson, you have about three motions here, so you're busy here tonight. Lagoon Infrastructure Upgrade Design.
Yes, thank you. This is for the detailed design of equalization lagoon infrastructure upgrades. The city of Weyburn obtained cataral and right to conduct a hydraulic assessment of the city's main sewage pump station, lift station number one, in July of 2022 as a result of localized flooding events that occurred in May and June of 2022. The hydraulic evaluation of the wastewater collection and discharge infrastructure identified areas of restriction within the system limiting pumping capacity and provided recommendations for upgrades to address the capacity and operability issues of lift station number one pumping system. The upgrades in the RFP include the detailed design of the bypass of the equalization lagoon inlet structure to reduce the restriction to the pumping system, and a detailed design of upgrades to the transfer pumping station to comply with the Water Security Agency requirements and improve operability. The scope of the work included in this RFP consists of detailed design package of inlet structure bypass and transfer station upgrades, tendering, administrative and engineering services during construction, commissioning services, and as-built drawings. The 2023 budget has allocated $750,000 for the recommended upgrades to address the capacity and operability of lift station number one. The detailed design procurement services and all construction costs will be covered under this budgeted amount. On April 12th, 2023, a request for proposal for the detailed design of the equalization lagoon infrastructure upgrades was posted on the city's new online bidding portal, bids and tenders, SaaS tenders, and the city's website. Proposals were to be received to the city of Weyburn by May 10th at 1:00 PM. A total of four proposals were received, and you can see them summarized below. All proposals submitted were evaluated with a weighted score in the selection criteria consisting of project understanding methodology, relevant technical experience, and proposed schedule and fees. It is recommended that the detailed design of the equalization lagoon infrastructure upgrades be awarded to MPE Engineering Limited as per the cost detailed and the conditions stipulated in the RFP, and the cost would be $69,898.69.
Do you have a motion?
Yes, your worship.
Your worship, I'll make a motion that the proposal of MPE Engineering Limited to provide a detailed design of the equalization lagoon infrastructure upgrades in the amount of $69,898.69 and the conditions stipulated be accepted.
Your worship, I will second that motion.
Discussion? Call the question, all in favor? Carry unanimously. Traffic line painting.
Yep, so this is for the 2023 traffic line painting roadways and airports. Public Works has an allotted department budget for traffic and zone marking of $115,000 for contractor provision line painting. A budgeted amount of $15,000 for the airport line painting is also reserved under engineering operating. The traffic line painting RFP has stipulated paint bead equipment and application requirements in three parts. Part one, traffic markings, which would be the centerline, intersection, crosswalk, and lane markings. Part two, no parking zones curb painting, and then part three, airport taxiway and main runway line painting. The RFP stated that the contract may result in a three-year term service agreement with the city requiring semi-annual application for part one and annual applications for part two and three. The RFP has also stated that the city would prefer to award all three parts together as one project. Therefore, bidders were encouraged to provide pricing for all three parts. On April 11th, an RFP for line painting for the roadways and airports was posted on the city's new online bidding portal, SaaS tenders, and the city's website. Proposals were to be received by May 10th at 1:00 PM, and we received a total of three parts. Some chose to bid on all three, and some chose to bid on one. It is recommended that the 2023 line painting for the roadways be awarded to Alberta Parking Lot Services for a total amount of $93,445.91, including taxes. It is recommended that the 2023 line painting for the airport be awarded to Alberta Parking Lot Services Limited for a total amount of $17,323.77, including taxes. The airport user fees generated an additional $2,681 above the 2023 budget amount, which will offset the $2,323.77 overage for the line painting, and the city will renew the contract service agreement with Alberta Parking Lot Services 1985 Limited for up to three years at the city's discretion.
Do you have a motion, please?
Your worship, I would move that the bid of Alberta Parking Lot Services 1985 Limited to perform the 2023 line painting for the following be accepted. Line painting for the roadways in the city of Weyburn, $93,445.91, including taxes. Line painting for the airport, $17,323.77, including taxes. And further, that the city renew the contract service agreement with Alberta Parking Lot Services 1985 Limited for up to three years at the city's discretion.
Go up, second?
I'll second that, your worship.
Discussion, always a good one there, Jennifer, and one that's always asked again, the paint. Is this the, are they using the paint that the department highways would be using similar?
Yes, we've confirmed that we are using the same paint, yeah.
Just that we seem to have more traffic than what the highways has, or whatever?
Yeah, just because you have a lot more starting and stopping over our lines, and a lot more traffic goes through, as well as, you know, the grading over them through the crosswalks and everything. We have, in the past, researched other types, but a lot of those other types you have to put in at the time of new pavement. It's not able to go back and put it in, so it's a lot of where you have to build it into the new construction.
Ryan?
I feel like you kind of already answered this question, Jen, but is the other company doing the same kind of paint? Or is it just, I noticed their quote is much, much higher.
Uh, yeah, so we basically stipulate the kind of paint, the requirements it has to meet, and set out all the standards, so they would be doing the same thing. And a lot of companies, it can depend on where they're mobilizing from, so.
John?
Thanks, your worship. Jen, just in regards to the service agreement and renewing on it for up to three years?
Yeah.
How does that process work? Is it still an RFP then, or?
Uh, we would be getting a quote from that company and working that service agreement out with them. It would basically be based on their quality of service they're able to provide and the pricing they provide. We would still get updated pricing every year, but it would go under a three-year contract.
Yeah, and it would just go to that particular company?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions? Seeing none, call the question, all in favor? Carry unanimously. Unidirectional water main flushing program, Jennifer, if you would.
Yep, so the unidirectional water main flushing program can be defined as the flushing of the city's water main network through isolated portions of water main pipe in single directions by closing valves and using specific hydrants. The major advantages of this method are improved cleaning of accumulated deposits on pipe, less required water than conventional flushing, and an impact reduction for customers. The scope of services for performing this UDF program includes preparation and execution of the UDF program, and analysis of the UDF execution with a final unidirectional flushing summary report deliverables. The 2023 budget has allocated $40,000 for water main flushing program. On April 20th, a request for proposal for the 2023 unidirectional water main flushing with an option of a three-to-five-year contract extension was posted on the city's new online bidding portal, bids and tenders, SaaS tenders, and the city's website. Proposals were to be received by the city of Weyburn by May 11th at 1:00 PM. A total of four proposals were received, and you can see the four companies below. And so it is recommended that the 2023 unidirectional water main flushing program be awarded to 3319628Canada Inc. as per the cost detailed and conditions stipulated in the RFP, with the option of a three-to-five-year contract extension at the city's discretion, so that amount would be $39,460.50.
Do you have a motion, please?
Your worship, I move that the proposal of 3319628Canada Incorporated to perform the unidirectional water main flushing program for 2023 in the city of Weyburn in the amount of $39,460.50, with the option of three-to-five-year contract extension at the city's discretion be approved.
I'll second that, your worship.
Discussion? John?
Your worship, Jen, just curious, this seems to be a numbered company.
Yep.
Where are they from?
Um, I believe they are from Ontario, but they are actually the ones that have done it for us in the past.
Oh, they have?
They have, yep. We didn't do it for a couple of years in there, just with lower water. In nickel, we kind of delayed it for a couple of years, but this is actually the company that's done it for in the past.
So we do have a history with?
Yeah, we have a history with them. They, we have reports from in the past, and we've had absolutely no issues with their completion of the work.
Thank you very much.
Call the question, all in favor? Carry unanimously. Director Crowe, roof replacement for the Sioux Line Museum/Sports Arena.
Thank you. So, yeah, as a part of a multi-year plan to complete numerous roof replacements on city-owned facilities, $315,000 was allocated through the 2023 budgeting process to replace a roof section at Tom Zandi Sports Arena and also one at the Sioux Line Historical Museum. So two separate requests for tender to have the existing roof sections at both of the facilities removed and replaced were posted on SaaS Tenders' website with a closing date for both of May 11th at 2:00 PM. We received two qualifying bids were received for the Sioux Line Historical Museum roof replacement, and one qualifying bid was received for the Tom Zandi Sports Arena roof replacement. All bids received were reviewed by RMIS Engineering. They've been contracted to oversee this project for us. Their recommendations were then presented to city staff. We reviewed, and we are presenting them as follows. So the pricing results for the proposals are as below. Tenders have been broken down into two parts. So some discussion, so during the 2023 budgeting process, the Leisure Services Department identified multiple city-owned facilities, buildings with roof systems that were considered to be high priority for replacement. Information has been further developed and put into a long-term plan over the next three to five years to address roof replacements throughout the city. So buildings were identified based on current and previous issues and expected life cycles. The two buildings identified as highest priority, requiring immediate attention, were the Sioux Line Historical Museum and the Tom Zandi Sports Arena. Both have been experiencing flooding issues during freeze and thaw cycles and rain events, creating safety concerns, causing further damage, and leaving areas of the facilities closed to the public. Following the 2023 budgetary approval, the city engaged a contract with RMIS Engineering to conduct onsite roof assessments, create specifications and drawings, manage the tender process, and oversee the contractor management requirements for the eventual replacement of both the Sioux Line Historical Museum and the Tom Zandi Sports Arena roof systems. The current 2023 budget includes $315,000 towards the replacement of both roof systems. The total cost associated with the replacement of these systems, along with necessary engineering fees, equate to $374,533, which is $59,533 over and above the 2023 budget allotment for both projects. This is largely due to unforeseen requirements at the Sioux Line Historical Museum realized during the assessment and the inspections that took place by the engineering group. So I've put a chart together, so part A, the Tom Zandi Sports Arena, there was a budget allotment of $225,000, and total costs, if awarded tonight, we'll be looking at about $208,000 to replace that roof section. And then part B, the Sioux Line Historical Museum, we had $90,000 allotted after the tender. The total cost for that project will be $166,192. So although the total cost associated with the roof replacements is greater than the budget allotment, both projects are necessary, as all temporary measures attempted to date have not been effective, and both roof systems are beyond repair and in immediate need of replacement. So it's recommended that the proposed roof replacement at the Sioux Line Historical Museum, part A, be awarded to Atlas Apex Roofing for a total amount of $146,067 plus taxes, and it is recommended that the proposed roof replacement at the Tom Zandi Sports Arena, or part B, be awarded to Atlas Apex Roofing for the total amount of $193,133 plus taxes. And it's also recommended that the roof replacement project overage of $59,533 be funded by reserves.
With that being said, do you have a motion?
Your worship, I'll make the motion that the bid of Atlas Apex Roofing, Saskatchewan, for the following work be approved tonight. The roof replacement at the Sioux Line Historical Museum in the amount of $146,067 plus taxes, and the roof replacement at Tom Zandi Sports Arena in the amount of $193,133 plus taxes. And further, that the budget overage amount of $59,533 be funded by the general reserve account.
More?
Your worship, I'll second that motion.
Discussion? John?
Andrew, a couple of questions. Do we know what the timeline is for this project, then?
So the specifications for both these projects is to have them both completed by October of this year.
And do we know what the life expectancy following the improvements will be?
So the life expectancy on those sections will be whatever the TPO membrane is. I would expect probably around 30 years on those. Some future issues we could run into is where those sections meet up with existing sections, but we'll just have to monitor that as we go.
Thank you. Laura?
Thank you, worship. Andrew, Councilor Corrigan kind of beat me to it, but it says here the completion date is slated for November the 30th. If it happens to go that late, will it affect anything going on at the Tom Zandi Sports Arena?
My apologies, not the end of October, November. No, we will be able to continue on. Both replacements won't affect what's going on inside the facility, at least it should not. If we do run into a situation where it has some impact on the sports arena, where the replacement is taking place doesn't actually impact the arena or the lower spectating seating, so that won't be impacted at all.
Perfect, thank you.
Swambetu?
Yes, thanks, Andrew. Couple of questions. One, anyways, what's the warranty period on?
I'm not sure. I have to get back to you on that one, yeah.
And then does RMIS, do they provide supervision and they make sure that everything's done to spec right to the end of the job and that it's?
Yeah, so they, yep, for sure. So they do, like I mentioned, they do the assessment of the facility, then they put together new drawings and specifications based on the actual site, and then they look after the contractor management, so they do inspections of the work, and they oversee all that piece as well. So they're kind of like our project manager, basically, and they have those qualifications and that expertise to know exactly what they're looking at on the roofs. That's their specialty, so.
All right, so it's, if there is an issue with things not getting done, then they're the ones that we go after and they get after it.
Correct, yeah. Yeah, so our facilities manager will work directly with RMIS throughout the whole project. We're still involved in all the project meetings and all that stuff, so we're still at the table, but at the end of the day, we have, they have a contract with us that they will look after the contractors, so.
Thank you. Ryan?
Andrew, I'm sure you've already considered this, but just given the age and, for lack of a better term, historical significance of the museum building, is everything they're gonna do compatible?
Uh, yeah, so right now, the section that they're replacing is tar and gravel, so they'll be removing that and putting it on the new TPO. It'll fit the building as far as the roof is concerned. There won't be any visual effects to the exterior of the building to anybody walking by or anything like that, so.
Excellent, thank you.
Nothing else? With that, call the question, all in favor? Carry unanimously. Is there no unfinished business, new business? Mr. Warren, if you would, please.
Yeah, thank you, worship. So I have a report on a citizen survey for council tonight. So in 2022, city Weyburn, in conjunction with the senior leadership team and council, began the process of developing the foundation for a strategic plan. So analysis was conducted, and a mission, vision, and values for the city were established. Council also established the following strategic objectives. So these are areas of focus for the city. One is economy, second is growth, third is community, and fourth is governance. So in March and April of this year, city Weyburn conducted stakeholder engagement sessions, and also had a targeted survey sent to community organizations and businesses that were identified as demographic stakeholders. The purpose of the engagement sessions and the targeted survey was to gather input from groups in the community to review the priorities established by the city of Weyburn to ensure they were on target for the broader community. Also, in review of our 2023 budget process, city council has requested information from the public in the early stages of the 2024 municipal budget, so we're looking for a little more information before we go through our budget process. So city administration has developed a citizen survey, which is attached for you to review. Community involvement is a priority. The survey is developed to provide the public an opportunity to provide input that will help city council and administration develop a plan that will guide the actions and directions of our community through both the municipal budget and the strategic plan. The survey is intended for residents and business owners in Weyburn. So we've identified a timeline for the survey, so tonight is just to provide a background to the public and to council. Between May 29th and June 16th is an opportunity to provide input, so we actually have a Survey Monkey available, and it'll be available on our Engage website, which is www.weyburn.ca/engage. So that'll be posted from those dates of May 29th to June 16th to allow opportunity for people to provide input back. On August 14th, we'll present input received at the council meeting, so that'll be information received, that will be collated and reported back to council. That'll also be promoted on our weyburn.ca/engage site after that's done as well. So I'm just recommending that city council approve the citizen survey and the opportunity for public input as presented.
Do you have a motion, please?
Your worship, I would move that the citizen survey for public input as presented. Your worship, I would move that the citizen survey for public input as presented by the city manager be approved as presented.
Second, please.
I'll second that, your worship.
Discussion. Laura?
Thank you, worship. I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank our administrative team, mainly Paige and Nicole, for taking this project on. The six of us sit up here, seven of us sit up here representing the views of everybody in the city. But unless we know what you're thinking, we can't put that into action. So I think this survey is really going to help us, you know, work into the future and hopefully, you know, move into or look at anything that's being missed right now. So I encourage anybody and everybody to fill out that survey.
Well spoken. John?
Thank you, worship. I would echo councillor Morissette's views on this. Really looking forward to seeing the results that come in. I look forward to more surveys and engagement with the community in the future. One question that I do have is there's always the criticism or concern of surveys that they are designed to lead you to the answers that the group that puts the survey out wants. Do we feel we're confident that there is a limited amount of bias within this particular survey to give a good indicator of what the community will truly express?
So I can answer that, councillor Corrigan. So the way we provide the questions to provide the best input as possible from the public, we actually provide opportunity for people to provide comments. And that's how you lead away from leading people, right? You provide them that opportunity to provide direct comments. And so we do that for many of the questions within the survey. A lot of them questions also are generic. Some of them have things that will not lead you, give you an option of how you feel. How you feel about how the city's doing? How do you want to see the direction of the city? How do you want to see the budget dollars? So, you know, with those two key indicators, we're not trying to lead people. We're trying to get people to provide honest comments and all comments will be provided back. So if people provide comments, that'll be seen by council and that'll be in our final report as well. I've seen other reports done by other municipalities where they have lots and lots of comments that are actually extremely beneficial to help guide administration and guide council on what they want to do and what they want to see. For us, we haven't seen a strategic plan here in a number of years. And this is an opportunity for people to provide that input. And secondly, you know, for us, last year was the first time in many years we provided the opportunity for people to provide input into budget. Now we're providing them an opportunity upfront before we even start that process, right, to help initiate and help council guide that process.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Yes. Any further questions? Mr. Chankey?
Further to what councillors Morissette and Corrigan have said, I would encourage everyone to take the time to fill out the survey. If you have strong feelings, absolutely, this is your opportunity to be heard, but even if you don't, your opinion values as much as anybody else's and the presence of it is valuable in the survey results, but its absence can also very much hurt them. So please take the time to let your voice be heard.
Thank you. Called question. All in favor? Carrie Denham. Requires an announcement. Laura, anything going around the room? Ryan? Ryan, I was going to say, but Andrew.
Thank you, worship. Yeah, I just wanted to give a reminder, I guess, to the public that our indoor swimming pool will be closing for the season on June 4th. Then we have about a one-week shutdown and the outdoor will open June 12th. So that's right around the corner.
Good. We have June 17th is our show and shine that's in town here, a big event downtown. And at that time, we will also have, should be the Walk of Fame. We'll be moving forward with that. One that Mr. Mickel, who surely will be missed, was always deeply involved with that. Anything else that is going on here? I think that's about it for now. Yeah, Danette, when's the next council meeting?
The next council meeting will be June 12th, where we will be swearing in our newly elected council member as we are holding an election. So just a reminder to the public that we have advanced polls. All election polls will be held at the Credit Union Spark Center this Thursday, May 25th from 5 until 9:00 P.M. Saturday from 1 until 7:00 P.M., which is May 27th. Those will both be at the Credit Union Spark Center on the main floor, just down the hall from the front desk. And then on May 31st from 9:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., up in the mini gym on the second floor of the Spark Center will be the regular election poll.
So I'd really encourage everyone to do their civic duty, come out, vote. There's four candidates and we'd like to see who is going to, the citizens will vote in for their new council to work with us here. Anything else? I think we were very fortunate, even though I was away during all the time, I kept in touch with Matthew and we were quite fortunate that we didn't have the storms that they were, yes, that they were predicting. We saw that, didn't see these monstrous storms. So hopefully the things will be good. Our city works was prepared just in case. So we didn't have the flooding like we had last year. We're working and it's just again, we strive, we strive, we strive to make sure that there is going to be no flooding. We've taken steps, Jennifer's, you know, the engineering department has done different steps to, which are, we flushed and we've done other things to try to alleviate some of the flooding problems we had, did we not, Jennifer?
Yeah, we have been doing things like, we do have been monitoring the gates at the dam so that we can release water. But obviously, you know, monitoring that quite closely so we don't want to lose our waters by, but they've been working on that. We have been doing flushing through our sewer mains, which we do on a quite regular basis, as well as we just passed to do the design for the hydraulic study, which will help with the lift stations. And then we do have a few other things going on, just kind of looking at the system as a whole, just on the kind of our drainage issues and the storm drain system. So, yeah.
So just so that again, the citizens know that since that last flood that we had last year, the city hasn't just simply been not sitting and not doing anything to rectify the problems. We've pinpointed problems. We've been striving to correct these problems as best that we can within budget restraints and as best as we possibly can do going forward. Any more announcements? Nothing? Seeing nothing more. There's no notice of motions. And with that, I will call this meeting adjourned. Thank you.